All right. Ready? All right, I think we'll get going. We'll call the meeting to order. Welcome to Freeport Town Council Chambers. It is Tuesday, May 7th. This is our regular May, first May council meeting, starting just a couple of minutes after 6:00. Please join me with the Pledge of Allegiance if you can, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to all our visitors here at Town Hall and those online. We have one of our counselors online this evening, but let's find out who's here in the room first. Counselor Pillsbury?
Present.
Counsel Fornier?
Here.
Counselor Smith?
Here.
Counselor Pilch?
Here.
And the Chair, John Egan, is here. And online is Joanna Benoit?
Here.
Here, sort of, virtually. All right, so this evening we have two public hearings, and we're going to set three public hearings for later this month and the beginning of June. So it's a busy season for public hearings. A lot of things going on, including our budget. Maybe you're here for some of that. And we have some adjustments on some ordinary town business to take care of as well. Our next order is to waive the reading of the minutes of meeting number 08-24 held on April 23rd and to accept the minutes as very well presented by our clerk.
She'll move second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any reason to take anything out of the minutes for discussion or any adjustments or edits needed? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, we need to do roll call. And I even wrote that, oh, Chip's online.
Yep.
All right, welcome.
I am.
All right. Because we have partial participation online, we'll do a roll call so we can capture that on video and audio as well. So for accepting the minutes, we're going to revote. Counselor Pillsbury?
Aye.
Counsel Fornier?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Aye.
Counselor Pilch?
Aye.
The Chair, Egan, votes yes. Chair, Counsel Benoit?
Yeah, aye.
And Counsel Lawrence?
Yes.
Okay, minutes are adopted. All right, that'll slow us down a little bit. We'll get used to that flow a little bit as we go through here with our orders and our votes. Our next item on the agenda this evening is announcements, and I have a couple, and then we'll go down the line, see if anyone has any others. Town of Freeport has engaged North Star Planning to assist us and the planning board with the process of updating the comprehensive plan. This is a 10-year plan that all communities in Maine go through. The project website for the comm plan is now live at futurefreeport.com. As part of that process, the town will be conducting a number of community outreach sessions and a community visioning survey. The survey can be taken on the website or paper copies are available here at Town Hall and also at the Freeport Community Library. I'll just stress that the comprehensive plan, while it seems boring and only comes around every 10 years, it's really a vital document for not just right now, but really for what we're going to do and how we're going to proceed and what direction we're going to take and how we're going to grow over the next 10 years. This council and future councils will refer to it frequently when making big decisions. So I encourage you to participate as frequently as you can in the comprehensive plan process. Please join us on June 12th for the first public workshop on said comprehensive plan. It'll be at the Community Center at 6:00 PM. Project team will be presenting data highlights from the inventory sections of the draft plan and initial results from the visioning survey. There's a plug to do the survey. Then you'll share your ideas through a series of open-ended activities and maps, and all of this input will help inform the plan's vision statement and our next steps. I'll just like to remind folks that we are right now in National Municipal Clerks Week. It is May 6th through May 10th. Initiated in 1969, National Municipal Clerks Week is a time of celebration and reflection on the importance of our clerks' office. And municipal clerks are the oldest public servants in local government. It is the professional link between our customers and our government agencies. They wear many hats, Chris Wolfe knows that, from elections and voter registration, issuing vital certificates, licensing, record-keeping, and so much more. We would not be able to operate effectively without the hard work and dedication of our municipal clerks. Thank you very much for expert service. Chris, any other announcements from counselors? Counsel Fornier?
Coming on May 31st, from 11:30 to 1:30, we're doing a time capsule event down at the Bull Street Park. Freeport Fire Company has sponsored t-shirts for the 7th grade class, who will also be putting their own time capsule in, which is kind of exciting. And the Freeport Lioness Club is having a light food for us there and drinks from that time. So hopefully everyone can come down and attend. I think it'll be a fun event, and we're hoping to find the 54-year-old time capsule that may be there or may not be there. So that's going to be an adventure in itself. So hopefully people can attend that. Well, we haven't got the Brown printing ready yet, but we have, we've got mixed news articles, and it's a mystery. So we'll see when that comes out on the 31st.
All right. Other announcements? Chip, Joanna, you have any announcements?
Nope.
Okay. Our next item is information exchange. This is a chance for counselors to share feedback and work from committees, dialogue and interchange with residents and on community issues, and generally just anything that's happened between the last meeting and today. Any items for information exchange? It's a quiet week in Lake Wobegon. Okay. Chip, Joanna, anything to share? Nope. Okay. Next is our Town Manager's Report. Sophie?
Good evening. I want to just let folks know that we are not going to have an ordinance committee meeting in May. I think we're going to be trying to have one the first week of June, if that works in people's calendars. Christine will do some calling around to find out. We do have the Municipal Facilities Committee meeting next week. The, it is a single-item agenda with talking about the lease at Dunning Boatyard. I am saddened to report that Cassie, our first canine, passed away. I was talking with Chief Goodman, and she was certainly a highly productive dog. And when he talked about her, she was definitely part of the police department team. So if anybody sees Sergeant Morehouse, I know that he's missing Cassie. He's been, Cassie's been part of his family for the last year or so. So I know that she meant a lot to the community. I also want to just recognize the incredible work that Neil Lyman and his crew are doing at Winslow Park. The crew comes in later in the spring. We, he had to deal with having no phones and no internet. Chris and her team tried very hard to pick up the registrations. And we do have a plan for next year to bring people in sooner or transfer some of that responsibility. But the park is filling up very fast, and I think it's going to look much better. I had a great conversation today with Carrie Kinney from the Land Trust talking about our desire to think long-term about maintaining trails and working and providing some assistance with our commission and how we could make the trails have a plan to actually maintain them. So I think we'll see some models or some suggestions coming up, which will be kind of cool. I met with the Tree Task Force last week. Had a great meeting. And ultimately, the group decided to let me have a shot at the Tree Ordinance, which will be the program that you've asked for in your charge would be an ordinance. And that, I think I will take to the Tree, to the ordinance committee next month so that you can take a look at it and see whether it's kind of aligning with the initial vision of that program. Great group of people. They want to plant trees. Would remind folks that the arborist right now is going to be treating for emerald ashbore and some brown-tail moth. So if folks see stakes in the ground, that's, those stakes are letting you know that the trees have been treated. Also, we did some research around the Planned Mallet Drive design of the multi-use path paving project that had been designed as a locally administered project through the Department of Transportation for the town to actually administer the project. There was a concern raised because it double-dipped a pot of money that couldn't be doubled up on. Ultimately, DOT agreed to cover all of the costs that we thought would be covered. But we made the decision to give the administration back to DOT. Earl and I will go get our local project administration certificate in the coming year so that we can manage those projects. Mine's about 20 years old, and I'm going to guess it's out of date. But we should begin to see some of that effort. At the Complete Streets Meeting next week, we're going to talk a little bit about multi-use path, about streetlight policy for how we might recommend that council deals with requests for streetlights, both putting them in and taking them out. But yeah, it's been kind of a very operationally focused couple of weeks in my office.
Any questions for the manager? All right. We'll now move on to our action items on the agenda this evening. If you need a copy, there's one on the back table. The first item, as always, is our consent agenda. This is a short list of relatively routine, theoretically non-controversial items that we can dispatch in a single action, often called the consent agenda. Any items stand out to any counselors to be removed from the consent agenda and be discussed individually? We have some liquor licenses and cemetery funds. Oh, I missed the public comment. All right, we'll get to that in a second after we do the consent agenda. Thank you, missed that. Anything to come off the consent agenda? All right, so to consider action relative to adopting the May 7th, 2024 consent agenda, be it ordered, that the May 7th, 2024 consent agenda be adopted?
Second.
All those in, Counsel Pillsbury?
Aye.
Counsel Fornier?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Aye.
Counselor Pilch?
Aye.
Counselor Egan says yes. Counsel Lawrence?
Yes.
And Counsel Benoit?
Aye.
All right, so the consent agenda has passed, and I'm sorry, I jumped over with a roomful of people. How could I forget that? The public comment period. So the public comment period, which we will take up now, is the chance for members of the public here in the room to address the council on whatever is on your mind, on items that are not on our agenda. So we do have a number of public hearings tonight. We're hosting some, and we're setting some. If you're here for any of those items, we'll get to those later, shortly. But if you're here for something else, we'd like to hear what's on your mind. We ask that everybody, respect everyone else's time and keep your comments to about three minutes. And also recognize that it's a chance for you to share what's on your mind, but not necessarily a big dialogue back and forth. So there may be a clarifying question, but we'd just like to hear from you. So if anyone would like to step up to the podium, the microphone looks like it needs to be adjusted, but it's not. It's right where it needs to be. So just state your name and where you're from, and let us know what's on your mind.
Good evening. My name is Stephanie Payne, and tonight I'm here as president of the Freeport High School Scholarship Foundation. Good evening. Thanks for the opportunity to share the amazing work that we're doing. The foundation is providing opportunities for young people in our community. The Freeport High School Scholarship Foundation was established in 2021 as a 501(c)(3) to provide multi-year awards to students for either college or vocational and trade education. Students apply and are awarded scholarships based on community activities, academic scholarship, and need. Because we know that it's not easy to navigate post-secondary educational journey alone, we pair each scholar with a community mentor who provides guidance and support to the students as they navigate their post-secondary education and career goals. The Freeport High School Scholarship Foundation is an all-volunteer, community-driven organization that relies on the generosity of donors and volunteers to achieve its mission. The foundation believes that higher education is essential to enhancing the quality of life of the community and supports the pursuit of education for our young people. Through the generosity of donors, we were able to fund our initial scholarships. We provide, continue to solicit from individuals and businesses in our community through annual appeals with the goal of expanding the number of students that we can support. We have presented at the Durham and Pownell Select Board meetings again this year and are pleased to announce that at the Durham Town Meeting in April, the town voted to award the Scholarship Foundation $10,000 from this year's budget. This year, we will award our fourth class of scholars. We continue, we have six current students who have successfully navigating traditional college programs and one student who has completed a certificate in the trades. We have awarded almost $50,000 in three years. 20 students have applied for this year's scholarships. And on Wednesday, members of the board and Jen Gulco, a board member and the high school principal, will meet to select a junior and a senior for a four-year college program and up to two scholarships for vocational or trade school programs. The recipients will be announced at the high school awards ceremony on May 30. It is our hope that the town of Freeport will consider awarding $20,000 to support our students and their future. Supporting the foundation is an investment in our youth and our community. Thank you.
Thanks, Stephanie. Anyone else wish to address the council on public comment? We will have a segment for online public comment a little bit later in the agenda. Seeing no other hands or folks moving.
Are there the last other business? Is that public comment then also for some of these other organizations? Oh, sorry, I was out of turn.
That's okay. All right, so our next item for action on the agenda is item number 133-24. We're going to start right here with Counselor Pilch. Could you please read the item or introduce it?
To consider action regarding amendments to Chapter 32, Shellfish Conservation Ordinance, to add procedures for an apprenticeship license program, amend the lottery procedures for unissued licenses, and to add a license fee reduction program.
So this is related to shellfish licenses, and we're holding a public hearing on this matter. If anyone is here to speak on this particular item, the public hearing is now open. Please come up to the microphone and share your thoughts.
I didn't, I didn't read the.
We haven't read the be it ordered yet. We're just introducing it for a public hearing. All right, if we don't see anyone wishing to participate in the public hearing, go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it up to the council. Questions? Charlie is here. Maybe he could be available if there's any questions. We've been talking about this for a while. Anyone have any questions to follow up with? Charlie Tetrel, our Marine Resource Officer.
Guess we did a good job then.
Joanna, Chip, do you have any questions for Charlie?
Nope.
Okay.
I have an easy one, just to make Charlie feel like he's, he's got a mission here. On page nine? Yeah, I'm not sure what section it's in. Section E, I guess. There's a sentence that struck out. I'm wondering why it struck out. It says, "No person shall be eligible," summarized, "no person can get a license if they vandalized or otherwise compromised shellfish from a conservation area." Which seems like a good idea, so why take it out?
So that is actually supposed to be crossed out because we haven't, I know that you guys have been in talks with the Shellfish Commission about the conservation areas. So that's kind of on hold right now.
Because we don't have the conservation areas.
Yeah, so that's just, that'll be in there when we go through those changes. But as of right now, that's just on pause.
Makes sense.
Yep.
All right.
But I agree.
Any other question on the amendments and changes here? All right, Dan, could you please read the be it ordered?
Be it ordained that amendments to Chapter 32, Shellfish Conservation Ordinance, to add procedures for an apprenticeship license program, amend the lottery procedures for unissued licenses, and to add a license fee reduction program be adopted? Second.
Okay, been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All right, Counsel Pillsbury?
Aye.
Counsel Fornier?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Aye.
Counselor Pilch?
Aye.
Chair Egan votes yes. Counsel Lawrence?
Yes.
Counsel Benoit?
Aye.
Motion carries, seven to zero. Thanks very much for all your work, Charlie, and to the Shellfish Commission for bringing that forward. Just for continuity, I think we would like to consider if we could have a vote to move item number 138, which is to amend the fee schedule, which largely includes adjustments on the shellfish license fees while Charlie is here. Anybody opposed to moving that item up so we can match number 138 with number 132? Great, all right. So we'll hear number 138. Eric, could you please read number 138-24?
Be it ordered that the Freeport fee schedule be amended to add shellfish license fees?
Second. All right, it's been moved and seconded. I believe that's the only adjustment on the fee schedule. That's correct?
It's the only brand I see.
Yep. So we're not changing anything else on the fee schedule. For those wondering why we're shuffling this quickly, it's to take advantage of our, the time from our staff here for this item. And we've talked about this before as well. Any questions for Charlie on where we are with the fee schedule amendments related to shellfish licenses? I've been practicing saying that. It's tough to get off my tongue.
Mr. Chairman, there seems to be minor other corrections on Chris's memo.
Yep, I just pulled it up. And I was going to say, we had to, we'd made some administrative corrections, like audio and videotapes are no longer, we don't issue videotapes, they're DVDs. We just did some corrections, actual administrative corrections on the fee schedule. Nothing that changed. We don't have an engineer now to bill per hour, so it's changed to as billed.
Any questions? Dan?
Just comparing the fees from the ordinance to the ones that we're putting in the fee schedule. In the ordinance, there's a surcharge that should be applied to each license to provide a dedicated revenue source for water quality testing, but that's not in the fee schedule.
That's the water quality fee.
Plus five.
Oh, got it. So it's just added to each one as opposed to a separate item. My mistake, I'm sorry.
Great, get that squared away. All right, the item has been moved and seconded. We're ready to vote. Any other questions? Counsel Pillsbury?
Aye.
Counsel Fornier?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Aye.
Counsel Pilch?
Aye.
Chair Egan votes yes. Counsel Lawrence?
Yes.
Counsel Benoit?
Aye.
All right. So that takes care of seven to zero, item number 138. Thank you for the indulgence of taking that out of order so that we could be efficient with the time from Charlie this evening. All right, our next item is a, another public hearing on regarding maximum height standards in a certain district in downtown. Counselor Smith, could you please introduce the item before we open the public hearing?
To consider action relative to amendments to Section 413, Village Commercial 1, VC 1, District of the Freeport Zoning Ordinance Regarding Maximum Height Standards.
Let's wait on that until we have comments. Anyone here for the public hearing on making adjustments to building height standards in Village Commercial 1? Our Assistant Town Planner is here to answer any questions, if anybody had any questions. This is a public hearing? All right, not seeing robust participation in the public hearing, we will close the public hearing. Cecilia, you've already presented on this, but if you want to just maybe wrap it up for the action that we're going to take this evening and summarize the language that we're adjusting.
Yeah, sure. So it's a pretty simple zoning text amendment. Right now, we have, on the Village Commercial 1 district, a limitation on the number of stories a building can have. So it's up to three, up to 45 feet is the maximum height. We're not proposing to change the maximum height, which would remain 45 feet. So it's just to remove that limitation on the number of stories to give the, somebody who was trying to develop a building a bit more flexibility in terms of building design so that they could do something that we might want to see, like underground parking or redevelopment of downtown spaces in the Village Commercial 1 district.
I'll just add that this particularly comes into play when you're building on a slope. And where the code requires to be measuring the height of the building is pretty well defined, but where you're measuring a story is not necessarily defined. And so parking, which would be mostly below grade in some places, could count as a story and therefore take away from the ability to have finished-conditioned space up above. So we're trying to clarify that to encourage better use of footprints in our downtown areas. So that's one of the reasons why we're considering this. Any other questions for Cecilia? And could you just remind us and the public the process that this went through before it came here?
Yes. So the planning board had just about two meetings in which this was discussed. The first one was a discussion on March 6th, which we introduced the item. And then they held a public hearing on the following meeting on April 3rd. We sent about 200 letters to people in the districts and the ones that are residential that are but the district. that are but the district, and we posted notice of the public hearing on the Times' records on the designated dates.
Was there any robust dialogue at those public hearings, or contentious issues?
We did not have many people at that meeting, but we had support from FEDC, so we had two comments from Peoplewind on board, supporting it.
So that's the item, it's relatively minor adjustment in the language. Any other questions for Cecilia? All right, why don't you read it for action? Eric?
Be it ordained the amendments to Section 413 Village Commercial 1, VC1, District of the Freeport Zoning Ordinance Regarding Maximum Height Standards be adopted.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Chip, Joanna, any questions or comments from you? I'm sorry, I have to remember to keep looking this way.
Yep.
All right, we'll go ahead and take the vote. Councilor Pillsbury?
Aye.
Councilor Fornia?
Yes.
Councilor Smith?
Aye.
Councilor Pilch?
Aye.
Councilor Egan votes yes. Councilor Lawrence?
Yes.
Councilor Benoit?
Aye.
Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you very much, Cecilia.
Thank you.
All right, that takes care of our two public hearings. Now we're going to set some public hearings. The next item is item number 135-24, regarding a public hearing on June 4th to talk about our operating capital and TIF budgets. We've had lots of conversation and workshops up to this point through the spring, led by our Finance Director, Jessica Malloy, who's presented an award-winning presentation of our municipal budget. And we're going to be taking action this evening on setting that public hearing, so we're not technically digesting or taking a whole lot of commentary on the budget, because this is not a workshop for that, but we're just introducing the item, and people are allowed to comment on that as we move forward, but your real chance to sink your teeth in is to get a copy of that budget now, and read up and have questions ready for the June 4th public hearing. We'll have plenty of time on the agenda for that. And certainly, anybody who has questions between now and then is welcome to talk to town staff or send an email to us councilors, and we'll find out the answer for your questions. Councilor Fornia, could you please read the item?
Be it ordered that a public hearing be set for June 4th, 2024, at the Town Council Meeting starting at 6:00 PM in Freeport Council Chambers, 30 Main Street, to discuss the FY25 operating, capital, and TIF budgets.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Jessica, do you have anything to add this evening?
Nothing to add other than if there are members of the public that choose not to participate in the public hearing. We do have a meeting tomorrow morning with department heads from 7:30 to 8:30 here in Council Chambers for them to discuss the budget one-on-one with department heads in a non-publicized way.
Okay, thank you for offering that.
Of course.
I know, just watching email, the councilors had a couple of questions, and anybody want to bring any of those up, or did your issues get answered, the information get found? I know there was lots of back and forth.
Yeah, we have a workshop at the end, but we also, earlier today, Jessica did a great job combining everybody's questions onto one sheet, answering them, and there were a few attachments to answer some other questions. And if we didn't hit the mark, really, you should say so, so we can try again.
So that's the teaser for the really hot item coming up later this evening on the agenda, is the budget workshop.
I think maybe most of the people in the room might be here for a portion of the budget discussion tonight, so I'm kind of excited. I see some familiar faces.
Daryl?
One question, not on this item, but on workshops. I've had a couple of people ask why they're not televised like these meetings, and I said, well, let me ask. So maybe that could be taken up on the other business later on, but what their argument is, and I think it's probably a just one, they could be more familiar with what's taking place, so I said, well, we can find out.
You know what our situation is with, I think we record all the workshops.
So the workshops have audio most of the time. We televise audio Zoom at the council's pleasure, so I think it's a matter of historically, that's just been the way. I also think that we're still trying to work through, and the equipment is backordered for the setup so that it will be a better setup. I noticed during the workshop, so we did Zooms for the, to record for people the workshops with the committees, and it's, it is really not an ideal video, so we've got to figure that one out. But all you need to do is tell me what you'd like, and we would absolutely make that happen. For you, Councilor Fornia, anything.
It was several citizens, so thank you, I think that.
That's a good idea.
Worked well, thank you.
Anything to increase participation from the general public?
I think part of it is, just Sophie, you were talking about the equipment that's backordered, the idea is for us to still be able to sit at tables with people rather than being removed, but the ability to sort of still have that very conversational setting, but still have the video equipment, which is what we need to update. Yep.
All right, we'll get focused on that. Thanks for the suggestion. All right, so we are setting the public hearing with a workshop later this evening on June 4th. The item's been introduced and seconded. We'll go ahead and take the vote. Councilor Pillsbury?
Aye.
Councilor Fornia?
Yes.
Councilor Smith?
Aye.
Councilor Pilch?
Aye.
Chair Egan votes yes. Councilor Lawrence?
Yes.
And Councilor Benoit?
Aye.
Motion carries seven to zero. We have a public hearing on our budget. Mark your calendars, June 4th, don't miss it. Popcorn available? Hope you come in and participate in that conversation, get a chance to read our award-winning budget presentation. Thank you. All right, our next item is to consider action relative to setting a public hearing for a special amusement permit for Athena's Cantina. This is item number 136-24. Councilor Pillsbury, could you please read the be it ordered?
Sure. Be it ordered that a public hearing be set for May 21st, 2024, at the Town Council Meeting starting at 6:00 PM in Freeport Council Chambers, 30 Main Street, to discuss a special amusement permit renewal for Athena's Cantina.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. We're just setting a public hearing, so we'll have a chance to hear more at that meeting about this permit renewal, but any other context, Chris, that we should be aware of?
This is just her annual renewal, for bigger events.
We have the proprietor here. You're welcome to make a statement, but you're not required to by any means. There'll be a public hearing at our next meeting, and you may ask, may be asked some questions at that time, but thanks for coming this evening. Any other questions from council, while we set this? Okay. Down the row, Councilor Pillsbury?
Aye.
Councilor Fornia?
Yes.
Councilor Smith?
Aye.
Councilor Pilch?
Aye.
Chair Egan votes yes. Councilor Lawrence?
Yes.
Councilor Benoit?
Aye.
Seven to zero. We have a public hearing for a special amusement permit renewal. Great, thank you. All right, moving right along. Item number 137-24, this is to consider action relative to setting a public hearing to discuss the adoption of a floodplain management ordinance. This will be coming up later in June. There's a fair amount of work to go over, and, which is why it's being scheduled for June 18th. It's also a significant piece of update in our coastal management. Looks like we're back up to the top here. Dan, could you please read the be it ordered?
Be it ordered that a public hearing be set for June 18th, 2024, at the Town Council Meeting starting at 6:00 PM in Freeport Council Chambers, 30 Main Street, to discuss the adoption of floodplain management ordinance.
Second.
All right, I don't see Nick here, to give a little context, but maybe you could just explain why, first of all, what's happening.
Yeah, I am Nick tonight.
And why we're setting this public hearing five weeks from now, because we have a fair amount of change coming.
So every once in a while, FEMA updates its flood maps and its rules that they use for the National Flood Insurance Program. That happened a while ago. Communities in southern Maine, coastal communities, kind of gathered together and tried to appeal the flood maps, the changes in the flood map. We were not successful in that. So they adopted the flood map back in December. At that time, the state rolled out a model floodplain ordinance. Nick has very painstakingly gone through that ordinance to make sure that it ties correctly to other practices and ordinance language that the town has. This will also require changes in the shoreline zoning and subdivision ordinances, and maybe it's just shoreline zoning. I'm gonna go with either one or both. But the issue with this one is it's fairly similar to the rules that we had before. It's a repeal and replace because it's a totally different setup, and for us to go back and try to fit it in around our previous language would be very confusing. So the two major differences, and they're ones that we are right now kind of appealing informally to FEMA and to the state, have to do with docks, wharfs, and erosion control measures in velocity zones, requiring engineering that they currently don't require. So Nick continues to work through that with Sue Baker. The council did have kind of some time at the last council meeting to talk with her. That seems to have spurred her on to really work with FEMA, so I think that was a great conversation for you to have. The plan, normally we don't call a public hearing this far in advance, however, I need to send out some postcards to everybody in the, that's affected by the change in the floodplain, and it seemed kind of weird to notice a public hearing that council hadn't actually set. So we're gonna go ahead and do that. We're hope to bring in the same night, the other changes to ordinances that need to be made to marry this all together. And that's what I have. I didn't do as technical a job as Nick did, but I hope I gave you enough information.
Sophie, is it fair to say that the language that we're going to be considering at the public hearing reflects the model ordinance from the state, and not necessarily verbatim adoption of what FEMA wanted, or do I have that the other way around?
We're still working through with the town attorney whether we can adopt what FEMA talked about and not what the state provided, which is taking out the reference to the engineering. We're not having a ton of success with that, so we're asking more questions, and we're asking the state more, because it seems that the law has an and, that we have to adopt the provisions of the state and FEMA.
So the recommendations for very specific technical things from FEMA are not necessarily tightly aligned with what the model ordinance from the state is?
No.
So we're trying to sort our way between those two?
We're trying to sort our way, and I know it sounds like long-term, given the concerns that have been raised in your conversation with floodplain representative last time. It sounds like she's, they are working very hard to try to make that happen, it's a timing issue at this point. If we don't adopt the ordinance before June 20th, we will have a bunch of people kicked out of.
Flood insurance.
Yep.
Which is really what's driving our timing here. Questions, Dan?
The ordinance, if I remember right, references the maps. Is there a way we could see the maps or have a link to the map, so we know who's affected?
There sure is. I can't do it, but I know people.
Okay, that'd be great. Thank you.
Daryl?
My question is, I've had a number of comments of people who said they understand the requirements for engineering services where the public's involved, you know, like at our, our public docks or whatever, but are very, very concerned on the extra cost and the possibility of a lot of people that are fishing losing their access to be able to harvest lobsters or oysters or whatever else that are down there. Is it premature that we, as a council, possibly ask our federal representatives to see if they could put a hold on this till we work through it, because it's kind of a cat before the horse, in my opinion? I'm not sure whether it would, but at least maybe it might be an opportunity that we, as the elected board of a coastal community, saying, hey, we need some help here, can we put the brakes on this for a while, because we're very concerned of losing access for local fishermen in our community, and also along the state, and also again to our state representatives, because it seems, even though we notified a long time ago, you know, that this was coming forward, we didn't have the verbiage, and we didn't have the effects it could have on our coastal community, and I, we're kind of being pushed into a corner, and I, I don't think it's quite right.
I think, given the feedback that I've gotten from our federal delegation around the OSHA Fire Brigade standards changing, I think it would make more sense for me to start with Melanie Sacks, and I'm happy to do that. I have a hunch that we can express our concern and displeasure, but I, I think we're gonna have a hard time slowing this down at this point. The state's recommendation to us is to adopt this language and then come back in another month and adopt. I know.
We, we made a protest to push against this adoption in the FEMA process late last year, or late in 2023, and we were not the only ones doing that. There were a lot of coastal communities that had pushed back and, and encouraged FEMA to reexamine, so we have already had one swing at it. I'm all in favor of seeing what else we can do to sort of adjust this where it makes sense for our residents here. So we'll see if we can get any traction with our state rep.
Yeah, see, I don't think it's a FEMA issue, Daryl, I think it's a state issue, because the state is adding language that FEMA did not put in their requirements.
So maybe what I'd like to suggest, and I'm not sure fellow councilors would agree, but maybe some sort of agreement that if you find a letter needs to be written prior to our next council meeting, that we authorize the chair, vice chair, and the town manager to write letters to the people that need to hear our concerns, so that we don't miss an opportunity to represent the people that we, we need to represent, and, and put up a strong fight. I, I think we really need to do what we can to try to slow this process down and be as vocal as we possibly can. So if, if other councilors are, would be in favor of that, I'd like to propose that.
Yeah, I mean, it seemed from our conversation last time with, with the representative from the floodplain management program, that there, what, there seemed to be consensus on the council that we were not excited about being pushed into adopting language that was not FEMA language, but with state language, that seemed to put this rather onerous burden on landowners for their residential purposes, specifically as, you know, we're watching homeowners sort of in waves, literally coming for shoreline stabilization, as well as for other, other projects, that they are doing their best to mitigate issues of increased storm damage. But part of it is not only the expense, but what I'm hearing is that there is not, there aren't even the engineers available to be able to do this work if suddenly everyone up and down the coast has to have everything engineered, that there isn't, there aren't the resources to be able to do that. So I think, I think we're gonna run into some very difficult problems with that, but it does feel like we are backed into a corner to make sure that we have flood insurance to adopt whatever it is we're being told to adopt. So I would certainly support, you know, writing a letter to express that to our state representative and senator, and beyond that, directly to the state program, but I, I do think we, we made that concern very clear, and it did not seem to get much of a response.
Chip, Joanna, do you have any inputs on this?
I certainly echo what Counselor Smith said fully, and appreciate that recap of that conversation with Sue Parker.
All right, so Dan and I can work with Sophie on getting the exact text of that letter, and I guess we'd go to the state through Melanie, or do we go directly right to Melanie?
I think I've got some ideas who we'd send it to, and CC Melanie.
Right, and we want to get on that, so that we can get some response back long before the 18th of June. So, all right, great, good suggestion, move forward on that, I'm in agreement. All right, so we have plenty of discussion here now, we have to actually set the public hearing for June 18th. We've read and seconded, I believe, this one, so we're ready to vote. Councilor Pillsbury?
Aye.
Councilor Fornia?
Yes.
Councilor Smith?
Aye.
Councilor Pilch?
Aye.
Councilor Lawrence?
Yes.
Councilor Benoit?
Aye.
All right, seven to zero, the chair votes yes, seven to zero. We're setting the public hearing for June 18th on floodplain management ordinance adjustments. All right, that, since we took care of number 138-24 earlier, that concludes our action items. Our last item before we get to other business is public comment from our virtual participants. Do we have anybody online who would like to make a public comment? If you do, please raise your hand electronically, and we'll move you over to participate. Three minutes is the suggested time, and please state your name and where you're from, and we'll, we'll hear what you have to say. Not seeing anything?
Uh-uh.
No hands raised. All right, so that moves us through our agenda to other business, and we have still the same room full of people we had 50 minutes ago, sticking it out, way to go. So this evening, in a few minutes, we're gonna be having a budget workshop for, or from our finance manager on our operating budget, which includes a number of things that we've all been digesting and dissecting. that we've all been digesting and dissecting in the budget, asking questions. And then this evening, we have somewhat of a rapid-fire presentation schedule here from outside community groups. The town has had a sort of an up and down record in its past 25 years, let's say, of participating in funding various things in the community. It is a subjective thing for the council. There is no statute that the town budget include or not include various items outside of our municipal spending and taking care of our assets. So we wanted to give folks a chance to make a brief presentation. All of you who are on the list, or at least all of you who I think are on the list, were asked to submit something in writing through the clerk, which we have, and so we're familiar with those requests, but we want to give you all a chance to say something in public, and this is the opportunity to do so. So I don't necessarily want to call out folks, but if you want to just queue up, and we'd love to hear from you, please introduce who you are with. And if you'd like, I can go through the list, but I think it might be easier if people just stand up if they'd like to share something with us, and we'd welcome to listen. Please come forward.
Hello, I'm Seth Ramis. I am the president of the Board of Directors of the Oasis Free Clinics and a 20-year resident of Freeport, and I want to thank you for your continued support of the clinics. In our last fiscal year, we served 84 Freeport residents in 306 office visits, and this included primary care, mental health visits, vision, prescription assistance, and aid in applying for main care. We also were onsite at the Casco Bay Inn with our new Mainers until that was closed and they've moved on. We're now working with them on the Brunswick Landing. We also saw 24 Freeport residents in our dental clinic. We estimate that's about $87,000 in free medical and dental care for Freeport residents. We're pleased to work and collaborate with Freeport Community Services as our partner, and I'm super excited to say that with the help of a federal funding from sponsored by Senators King and Collins, that we are breaking ground on our new clinic space over in Parkview Hospital area, which will allow us to almost double the number of patients that we see, and most importantly, to expand our dental care and open it up more broadly because of a partnership with UNE and UNE Dental Students.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Great, thanks, Seth. I think we'll let the folks come forward first, then we can we can ask questions. Please come forward. Don't be shy.
Good evening. I'm Kathy Hi, and Margaret Morford and I are the have been the co-chairs of the Freeport Farmers Market for the last two years, and we're with your support, hoping to continue for a third successful year. Last year, we held the market at the Memorial Park, which, for those of you that don't know it by that name, it's the park with the cannons. It was a great place for a farmer's market. Kids played on the cannons, people sat in the sunshine on the benches, there was plenty of shade for our vendors. We often had music or some sort of a children's performance. It was a really wonderful community gathering place. The weather wasn't great last summer, and attendance was down a little bit. We're adding some new programs. We have great returning vendors, and it was mostly used by locals, a few tourists. The community seemed very enthusiastic, especially about the new location. There are a couple of things that we're working on in the coming year. To be really successful, we need to attract more people for our vendors and also just to make it more fun. We are not that media savvy, so we have been have hired a marketing consultant to help us navigate through the social media world, which costs money. Last year, we offered access to SNAP benefits, which is the state food program, and it was a great program to be part of, but we didn't have many customers. So this year, we've decided to start a local food voucher program, and the idea is to help people in town who might normally not be able to afford a farmer's market to give them a $20 voucher to be used with the food vendors at the market. The program already exists in Yarmouth, and it's been very successful. We have wonderful sponsors, Maine Beer Company, St. Jude's, South Freeport Church, and the Rotary, and they're helping us with this, and we're supporting it as well, and it will we're hoping make the market more accessible to local families. Funding from the market comes from vendors who pay $150 for a seasonal spot or $15 for a day table, and also from sponsors to, again, Maine Beer, Heresekin Inn, Balsam Realty, Bath Savings, and the Hilton Garden Inn, and we hope the town. With the increased focus on marketing and the food voucher program, we will have additional expenses this year. We think these efforts will make the market stronger and can have it continue to be a very much of a community gathering spot and a real asset to Freeport. Thank you.
Thanks, Kathy.
I feel we're going out of order.
Hi, everyone. I'm Sarah from Freeport Community Services. I didn't have anything planned, but mostly wanted to use as much time as I could thanking you and the town of Freeport for your incredible support over the years, and we really, really honor our relationship with the town and our entire community and would not be celebrating our 50th anniversary but for this amazing community, so thank you. We've definitely seen an increase in participation in programs, certainly over the last year, but we've been looking at numbers for the past 10 years and seen about a 40% to 60% increase, particularly in the multiple food programs that we offer. We're also seeing an increase this year in summer camp scholarship requests, which we're really, really pleased to see because COVID definitely caused that to dip a little bit. So needs are on the rise. We know things are super expensive. Cost of living is is very difficult for a lot of folks to achieve. So again, thank you for your support in the past and considering our application this year.
What's the date of your big event coming up?
Oh, yes. So it's it's actually next week, which I'm still wrapping my head around. So we have our spring gathering, which is our annual spring gala. That's happening on the 17th, so next Friday, and we're really looking forward to it. It's happening at the LL Bean Corporate Office, the new one. We won't have access to the entire building, so I know a lot of folks are looking for the sneak peek in. You'll get a sneak peek, but it won't be everything. But it'll also be a really great evening celebrating FCS and all that we can do together.
Great, thanks, Sarah.
Thanks.
My name's Heather Biggar, and I am a resident here in Freeport, and I'm here today representing through these doors in our application. I have been a staff member there for over 10 years, and I want to thank you for your continued support of our organization and our applications over the years. We are really grateful for the support and support through our municipalities because although the dollar values may not have increased from our asks, we do utilize those dollars to really leverage federal and state dollars as well. So every dollar matters to us in our nonprofit world. And we are the Domestic Violence Resource Center, as I said, that serves Cumberland County, and you'll see in our application that we served 35 residents last year here in Freeport. I want to really lift that up and also say that those are folks that identified, they could safely identify where they were calling from. Over half of the people that utilize our services do not feel comfortable sharing their location, so I do feel that the number is probably not truly reflective of how many residents that we have supported here in Freeport. I get to oversee our community education and prevention program through my role, as well as oversee our helpline services, which are 24 hours a day, and are part of the safety net, working with law enforcement and other social service supports here in our town and throughout Cumberland County. And I had the opportunity just a few weeks ago, actually, when I was on helpline, to talk to a first-time caller to our helpline from Freeport. And so obviously, that's a connection to me being in this town, but I wanted to lift it up for all of you, just recognizing that somebody came forward and was referred to us through a friend, actually, and they called just wanting to ask questions and really share what was going on in their life, and it was the first time they had really talked about what was going on. So we were able to speak for just over an hour, providing options and resources and really exploring what was going on, as well as some emotional support. Confidentiality was really a concern for them, and they wanted to know what options were available before they took steps forward. Obviously, safety was utmost importance for them, but I was able to also talk about our local law enforcement and our relationship with Freeport PD and provide support if they were choosing to go through some legal remedies, which was great. The other thing that you won't see on our application that I get to be a part of is our youth education program, and I am really grateful to say that we have been in Freeport middle schools and high schools for a number of years through their health classes, and that is one of the programs that I we really love to do because it is prevention-focused, and getting to work with the youth and have these conversations and engage in that skill building with them at an early age is really important to us as we think about prevention and providing safer opportunities for folks growing up and engaging in their relationships. So thank you again for your continued support through these doors, and we really appreciate you looking at our application this year and considering it again.
Thanks, Heather.
If I can indulge the council, Suzanne Watson, 21 Carriage Road. I've been a almost 20-year resident of Freeport. We'd like we have a short presentation, if Tom is able to set that up, and I had two other speakers here tonight, our president and vice president, and they both thought this would go a whole lot longer. So I am now the stand-in, and I'm going to have to read largely what their language is, but I'll give Delaney a second. Delaney Woodward is our administrative, she's our creative administrator par excellence. So I'm going to just start, though, on behalf of Meeting House Arts. We'd like to thank the council and the town of Freeport for their Momentum Grant, which allowed us to purchase a commercial-grade projector for use in our our space, the theater just up the road, theater and gallery. It's for use with our National Endowment for the Arts project, which was awarded to us this last year. It's one of two in the state of Maine and only 80 in the country. It's quite an honor for us to have gotten that as a young upstart organization. The project is--
Go ahead.
And there she is. Do you want to step in?
Sure.
Okay.
Sorry, I apologize. Hi, Kate Warner. I'm on the board of Meeting House Arts. I'm also in District Two. On behalf of Meeting House Arts, we'd like to thank the council and the town of Freeport for their Momentum Grant, allowing us to purchase a commercial-grade projector for use with our National Endowment for the Arts project, our town. The project will later be used for multiple purposes in our facility. We hope the council will consider the use of our performance space as an alternative location for town meetings, which exceed the council chamber and the Bradley Room capacity. With this in mind, we're upgrading our technical scope and making other changes to accommodate and ensure success of live Zoom. So you can see our facility. We have a capacity of 180. We're also eager to make our spaces ever more available and useful to the local schools. Each spring, we offer a popular show of student art in our gallery, and last month, as part of the Freeport High School curriculum, over 30 students held moth talks on our stage at no cost to the school. Upgraded technical capacity benefits all of these. We're pursuing funding from multiple sources to pay for the improvements. The $15,000 we've requested from the town is part of this initiative. It will support our efforts to make our space more useful to the Freeport community and allow us to improve the ways in which we fulfill our mission, like our Freeport Community Arts newsletter that goes out to thousands of subscribers each week. Sign up on our website, meetinghousearts.org. Our free summer concerts on Memorial Park and Mansfield Park contribute to the recognition of Freeport as an arts and cultural destination. In partnership with the town, we're working to fulfill the reality of the downtown vision plan. We look forward to helping install public art throughout Freeport, and based on a recommendation from the plan, partnering with the town to find a local a location and design for a permanent performance bandstand or pavilion. Lastly, we're also very happy to report that our Arts Access Fund is now sponsored to a point where we can use it to enable local access to all to the arts in our community. Thank you again for your past support and for the ongoing opportunity to work together for the future of the Freeport community.
Thanks, Kate.
And open for any questions. Sorry about that. Oh, my gosh.
We're going to pivot to a participant on Zoom, Liza Moore.
Allow her to speak.
Good evening.
Hi, Liza.
Hi, hi, everyone. Thanks for letting me present tonight, speak on behalf of the Freeport Elders Association. And the Freeport Elders Association is housed at Freeport Community Services. We have our own room there, and the town has helped support our our programming for a very long time. We've been in existence for 25 years now, and basically, it's a very simple mission is to reduce the feelings of isolation and loneliness that older people have experience. For most of the people, it's because they've lost a spouse or, you know, close family members. So I've recently gotten involved with the Freeport Elders Association, and I'm so impressed with all that goes on in the space over the course of a week. Every day, there are between 12 and 25 people who drop in just to share a cup of coffee and and a laugh. Twice a month, they go on bus the elders go on a bus trip. We've got a 14-passenger van. We also have a monthly potluck. We have a monthly birthday party and other activities. We also participate in a lot of the activities that Freeport Community Services helps offer through their age-friendly program, which is fantastic. So I just, again, want to thank the town and the council for supporting us over the years, and, you know, I hope you'll continue to support us. That's it.
All right, thanks, Liza.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I think everyone that's here has stood up that wanted to.
Can you comment on any of these?
We will, once we've heard from everybody. Just want to make sure we can go through. Chief, do we have a memorial service for Cassie that we want to include in the--
No, we're at the PD, we're all pitching in and we're doing a plaque that we're going to hang up, kind of memorializing her.
Yeah, great dog. Yep, I don't mean to make light of that. All right, just want to make sure everybody's had a chance, if you're here, for presentation. Okay, so thank you all. It's really great to have members of the community come and share a little more detail, a lot more background, and certainly the impact that all of you are having in our community for the programs and the staff and all the activities that you're doing in your particular slice of activity, community activity in Freeport. I don't think we're actually taking any action this evening, but we have a we're way ahead of our schedule, so we have a little time here. We can have a conversation at the council level, and you all have patiently stayed, so we can have some back and forth if councilors are indulged to ask questions, and we can maybe get a little more information. But I really want to thank you all for coming this evening. We're changing, this is a change from how we've previously done it, to have everybody come in at one time to maybe make it a little more efficient and and make it a little bit more present for the council to be looking at the issues of all the different slices of activities that you all are doing in your community groups. So I'll open it up for questions or comments, and if you get asked a question, just so that we can capture it on audio, please come back to the podium so we can hear you in the microphone. If you respond from your seat, then the recording and the general public can't hear what you're saying, so we'd ask. And if you need a wireless mic to come to you, we can make that happen as well, but we just want to get your voice on on audio. So questions? on, on audio. So, questions from the council about any of the presentations this evening? Darrell?
I guess I have one question for all the presentations. If, and my question is, it seems that there are more grants and opportunities from the state level, the federal level, whatever. So, my question is, have you received those? And is it adequate to do what you have been doing to see, you know, how the funding level is for your operation? Because I think I, I'm not sure where all the monies, and I'm a conservative guy, and the people who've been here before would know that. But I think you all have excellent programs. But if, in fact, you are adequately funded from other sources, other than, you know, municipalities, and it wouldn't have a negative effect, I'd be interested in that. And that probably could be maybe identified through Jessica or someone, I'm not sure. I'm not here to get into detail of their operating budgets, but in the overall scope of what they provide.
I think, yeah, I think their response to that might be better, sort of individual rather than in a public setting here. But other questions from counselors for the groups that are present this evening? Dan?
I have a couple, and they're all in, I think, a favorable spirit. So, the first one is for Seth from Oasis. First of all, impressive. So, what I got from the, the application is hundreds of office visits from doctors and dentists for a budget of $776,000, which, when I do the math, is way less than I pay when I go see the doctor. So, it's impressive that you're able to do that. And I'm sure it's a big help to the community that we were supporting as they pass through Freeport on their journey. And so, question is a simple one. Last year, it looks like we gave you $1,000. This year, you're asking for $1,750. You've got a lot of stuff in the works. Any reason why that increases $750 and not $500 or $1,000?
I, I'm afraid I don't know why our executive director asked for that. I know that we are in a position where almost all of our operating budget comes from individual donations and foundation grants. And so, yes, we, we got this wonderful $800,000 federal earmark, but that's for renovating space. And once we have the space and we have to fill it, and once you put dentists in it, things get really, really expensive, just in terms of the equipment, the supplies that we, that our dentists use on a day-to-day basis. So, that's really what we're looking for, is, is help meeting that, that expanded service.
Yeah. It's not unreasonable. I was just curious, but that's.
Just one other question, Seth. It's really helpful in the materials that you all put together and sent to us through Jessica, where you were able to identify where some of the other revenue sources are, like federal funds and state funds. And you, I know, receive a chunk from United Way as well, and several other municipalities. I just noticed that it doesn't look like you have something listed for Brunswick, and I was curious about that.
We have asked them on many occasions, and will continue to ask.
Okay. But it does, it does look like what you're requesting from us is somewhat proportional to what you're receiving from other smaller municipalities. So, that was helpful to see. Thank you.
Joanna, you have your hand up?
I do. First off, I'm so disappointed to not be there in person. I love this kind of back and forth and hearing from all of you. And my question is specifically for Kathy from the farmer's market. I'm really happy to hear that, you know, it's been a lot of locals who have come. I think we all can agree this fits with our downtown vision plan. I love the idea of the vouchers that are based off of what we see in Yarmouth. And I'm just curious, and I think the answer is yes, but just, just checking, that even with the vouchers, are we still planning on accepting sort of the SNAP and EBT benefits as well from folks?
We are, we are. We'll do both. But last year, we had a total of three people who used the, the SNAP, and that just didn't seem enough. So, we hope we'll reach a lot more people this way.
Yeah, and I think that's, once the word gets out, I hope that becomes more.
Me too.
Or a bigger number. So, thank you.
Thank you.
If I could just jump us back to Oasis, I did just want to point out that $1,750 is what has been being requested for a couple of years now. We, his, our historic practice has been that what goes into the budget is what was in the prior year, so that there's no increase. It is talked about and discussed if there wants to be a change. The last few years, there's not been appetite to, to make the, any changes to the outside agency support. So, just wanted to offer that little bit of insight, that it, it's maybe a, a long-time number coming. And it wasn't just a year-one request for the increase. It was, it's at least a two-year.
That's helpful. Thanks.
Darrell?
And the other idea, may I, behalf of the Freeport Scholarship Program, I think it's a great program. I, I would recommend, maybe, we have, like, the Freeport Fire Company. I think if you reached out to us, you probably would receive a donation. There are a number of nonprofits in town that aren't aware of that. So, the Fire Company gives out four scholarships every year, but I think we're, really support that. So, I would encourage you to reach out to us. I think you may be pleasantly surprised at what some of those organizations would like to do.
Well, I know that when we first started the Scholarship Foundation, if, if anybody has been around the high school recently and gone to one of those award ceremonies, there are lots of very little scholarships, and a lot of them are not based on need. And so, we reached out to all of those organizations in '21 and said, you know, do you want us? Because we, our money is managed by Bass Savings, and we have a full board, and it's, we have a lot of structure that we built into this program. But we certainly will reach out to you. Thank you.
While you're, while you're there, sorry. The, did the RSU just receive a, a large gift? And is that in negotiations with, like, you managing it?
We are waiting. They receive, I don't know that they've actually got it. We spoke with the superintendent and the president of the school board, the RSU-5 board, about it earlier, about a month ago. And they were sort of waiting to get the terms. And that is something that we may possibly manage. It will have certain restrictions as well. So, are, we are based on need. So, the gifts that have been given, donations that have been made to the Scholarship Foundation by individuals, for the most part, are because of what we're doing, you know, we, they gave with that idea. And also, we added the vocational and trade school track as well. And that would be managed separately, that, that other one. So, we're, we're waiting, and we've offered, but we're continuing forward and going to award two scholarships again this month, at least.
Thanks.
Darrell?
This may be for Jessica, and I'm not sure if she'll be able to answer it, but on the request for Life Flight, is that a new request?
The, that section, the Life Flight Health, and there was two, three or four there. My paper's over there, so I don't have.
Yeah, yeah.
Those were blanketed solicited letters received, and that's why I compiled them all together. They weren't necessarily specific requests done on our application. But in light of all the requests, I just didn't feel right not making you aware that there was something being asked.
I just, I don't know, I quite questioned that down the road, so, thank you.
Jessica, why there? This is an easy one. The Elders Association, on their application, it says, "We didn't give them money last year, but I think we did." And the budget, it looked like we gave them $6,500 last year, which was the same they're asking for this year. So, just confirming. Okay.
I believe what may have been confusing is, sorry, I just jumped right back to the mic on that one. I think what may have been confusing is when there, I believe there was a change in, I'll call their leadership. And there was the confusion on when to make their request or how to get the funding. And I think that was actually, like, maybe two years ago, that the funding lapsed before they knew to ask for it, because they got their request to reapply. And
I remember that.
So, I think that was a couple of years ago.
Okay. Thanks.
All right. We have a captive room here. So, any other questions for our presenters? Sure, sure. I feel like I interrupted you half. Just, just one question into your four questions.
Hi, my name's Amanda Kent. I live over off of Lambert Road. Been a Freeport resident for over probably 12 years. We moved from Portland to Freeport partially because of the whole nature of the town of Freeport, and that included a lot of these organizations doing what they do so well. I'm a business owner. We own a business down on south of town in Freeport. So, we pay taxes for our home and for our business. And I'd like to just represent the general public who take advantage of a number of these organizations, or go to a number of the events, or help support them, help support them with finances. And I'm also on the Meeting House Board Steering Committee for the Our Town Project because of my background. And I would like to put some support in, I think Eric couldn't say anything because he's sitting on the council, but for the Historical Society as well. And the council has also agreed to be part of the Our Town Project. So, I'm really looking forward to, at the end of this month and the first of next month, you all participating individually, grouply, and all these organizations participating as well. And Delaney has started our website for that. Councilor Fornier, when you do your finding of the, of the
Time capsule.
Time capsule, it's a fabulous thing to incorporate into our town project, because it's supposed to be a snapshot about what Freeport is all about right now and that two-week window. And then the exhibition and all the other fun stuff that will come from it will be all over the town later in 2024.
So, if you'd like to put something in it, the seventh grade at the middle school is putting it together.
Delaney's taking notes. I'm just on the steering committee. What I did want to say was that, again, my husband and I moved here from Portland after having lived in Portland for over 35 years. And we chose to move our business to Freeport to participate in a very rich and vital business community, as well as individual community. And part of what we really wanted to see was organizations like Meeting House Arts, where there were a lot of really vital and exciting things going on, that you could look online and say, "Oh, I can go do this," or, "Oh, I can go do that." Certainly with Nordica's Theater going down, and a lot of the empty businesses on town, in town, because of the retail issues that have been there, it's been a little frustrating for us in the business community to try to figure out the best way to encourage that. But I do believe that part of the way to encourage that is, again, to have really vital organizations like Meeting House Arts, who is going out and trying to get additional funding for specific projects on the federal and state level. Same thing for the Historical Society. These are organizations that are not helping necessarily one individual, but the entire town, and setting up a, an essence for what Freeport is all about. And so, I'd really like to see support for those organizations continue. I know, the other thing I would like to mention is that I know Freeport Community Services is an amazing organization, very, very not emphasized as much as they should, I think. People kind of forget about them sometimes. And every single one of these Cumberland County organizations work with Freeport Community Services. So, the fact that we're funding those organizations that aren't based right here, well, some of them are, but not based right here in Freeport, I'd like you to take that into consideration and how they're working with Freeport Community Services. Because as a non-parent with no children, paying my taxes here in Freeport, I would like to see my money going to Freeport. And I would like to see the organizations that we have for social services and everything else, supporting the organization that has been here as long as it has and doing so well, for our seniors and for the, a lot of the others. And I think that this, the, the council has done really well, and Freeport has done really well, to support those organizations. But I also believe that the business community should be stepping up more. And for instance, like the Chamber, I'm a Chamber, member of the Chamber of Commerce. I would never not think it was a great organization. But traditionally, Chamber of Commerce's are not supported by the town. They're supported by the membership and the business, you know, participation. And I believe that that's true for a number of these organizations. They shouldn't just be looking for handouts when other organizations, like Freeport Community Services and Meeting House Arts and the Historical Society, are town-based. I think that's it. Thank you.
Thanks, Amanda. Appreciate your support. All right.
I've got one more question.
No, one more. Go ahead.
One more question.
We're still way ahead of schedule.
That's what I figured. I figured tonight's a good time to eat up some, sometime. So, for the Freeport Farmer's Market, I, it's always been sort of a pet favorite project of mine. I remember from the early days, when we, we first kind of helped get it set up. So, happy to continue support for it. I pledge to do everything in my power as a town counselor to make the weather better this year. I don't know how effective I'll be, but I will try. But I think last year, we took the allocation out of ARPA. So, I'd like to request that we put it in the budget, and the question's more for Sophie. And what, how do you, when do you want those changes to be suggested, to change the budget? Do you want them as formal amendments at some future meeting? Or should we just say, hey, can we put it in and get some head nods? Or what would you like?
I would think, if there's consensus, we could ask just, just to put them in. If there are concerns, then I think we'd want to vote, so it's not back and forth kind of thing. That gets tedious when you're a finance director.
Got it. So, they're, they're asking for $1,500, which is what we gave them last year. It just didn't come out of the operating budget last year, so it was a zero going forward. But it's the same $1,500 we gave them last year. But I'd like to ask that we put that back, or we add that to the operating budget, so that we can support them at the same level we did last year, and I think the year before as well. Actually, the year before, we gave them even more. Is everybody okay with that?
I definitely echo that.
I'm just wondering if you want a formal motion to, on, on some of these things? To discuss them, or do we want to wait until we have a?
I, I would prefer to wait, but that's just me. If other counselors are ready to adopt a motion, to take into account the presentations that we've heard this evening and the dollar amounts that are on the budget page that has been provided, we can do that. I, you know, that's fine. I, I wasn't thinking we'd do that tonight, but that's, you know, I'm just one up here.
I mean, we, we stopped the vote on everything anyway, but I think giving, giving information to Jessica to continue doing the work she needs to do.
I, yeah, I would just reiterate what Sophie said. If there's consensus on the board that that's something that, you know, the majority are interested in having put in, it, it will be built into the budget for the next meeting, so that you can see what those numbers look like. As far as a formal vote, I, I tend to agree as well. I would just want the vote, if there's contention or discussion that needs to happen. And what, even that with, with or without a vote, the discussion can occur, and you can decide that, you know, you don't have to vote on all of these tonight. It's just, it's helpful for what I provide to you. If everybody's in agreement that Farmer's Market should get $1,500 added into the budget, it's easier to add it in, so you see what those numbers are sooner, instead of waiting until the last meeting when you adopt and seeing all those change impacts then. And it still doesn't bind you to leaving it in there, obviously. You know, there's still three more meetings for discussion.
I, not ready. I, because there's some questions I want to get back from the questions I asked earlier that'll be, be going. that'll be going to Jessica. But I like to throw something out there, though, you know. Lifeflight, we haven't had that. It was a cover letter that was sent to us, and I think they're adequately funded. So, I can't personally support their request. I think that should be zero, but that's me personally.
Along those lines, could I ask that we break out those three items into individual items so we can have discussion on them? Because I'm not sure that I would feel the same way about all of them because I feel like some of the other organizations are providing a safety net for our community members, and there's demonstrated need. So, I'd like to consider those individually.
Yeah, I mean, that's what I was thinking, is that we'd have a little bit more conversation in a budget workshop, which we have one coming up right after this. So, that would be the first chance to dive into it and go through these individually rather than taking a sort of an all-or-nothing approach. But if we, you know, if four of us want to do it that way, then that's the way we do it, so.
I guess I would just like to say, while we have everybody in the room, I think, you know, we're also looking at a sheet, which I'm not sure that is necessarily in front of all of you in terms of the dollar amounts are widely varying between a lot of these organizations. And in many cases, as Jessica has said, what's already included in the proposed budget is flat funding from last year. And as councillor Pilch mentioned, that doesn't include if some things came out of American Recovery Act money. And so, some of them we have funded, but they weren't out of the operating budget. And so, even bringing up to the amount that they've asked for is really going from zero to whatever that amount is in operating. And it really is, in some cases, the incremental change is almost nothing, but we still have to vote on that. But I do think that from a lot of what we've received, including from many of you adding your perspective tonight, that the value of the services that you're providing compared with the amount of money that you're asking from the town of Freeport is really sort of not even comparable. So, I appreciate the fact that for many of you, what you're asking for is sort of the bare minimum compared to the value of services. And you are seeking funding from lots of other places, whether it's other municipalities, other government sources, and for a lot of you, it's individual donors. So, it does sound like we're going to have to have some more conversation. I will just say that from, on some of the higher dollar amounts, Meeting House Arts, I appreciate the fact that one of the things you're talking about is making a public space available in terms of facility that could actually be used by the town for town events that are larger than other venues, as well as what you're actually providing, not just in that venue, but arts and cultural programming that fits within both the downtown vision plan as well as the arts and cultural plan that's really part of making Freeport, you know, a destination. And the thing that I think is the bigger sticker shock is the Freeport High School Scholarship Program. But I will say that I think part of what is so important about that is, as you talked about, it's one of the few needs-based scholarships that does go through Freeport High School. And as we've all talked about, I think a number of times, it's the economic diversity in the town that I think many of us are concerned about maintaining and making sure that students who do have financial need are able to go on to higher education that would hopefully allow them to stay in the community and make the sort of money that would allow them to stay in the community. So, I appreciate everything that all of you have shared tonight. That was it.
All right. Any hands up from Joanna or Chip?
They look pretty comfortable.
All right. So, thank you all. We're going to continue. The meeting is public. You're welcome to stay. But the back and forth on your presentations, I think we've wrapped up that item. We have some staff here to talk about department budgets, and we're focusing on the operating budget this evening, which is where all your requests sit right now. Just to remind you, we have three budget channels. We have a capital budget, which is fire trucks and roads and sidewalks and anything over $5,000 that is permanent and not consumable. That's called a capital item and goes into our capital programming. Our operating budget is ordinary function. Most of that is humans that take salary and benefits to run our town. And then the third relatively small part of our budget is our TIF account from our various tax increment financing, which is dedicated financing of tax revenues from those projects within the TIF district. So, those are the three elements of our budget practice. And we're having additional discussion this evening led by our finance director on the operating budget. And then there'll be the public hearing coming up in June, which we voted on earlier in the evening. So, I encourage you to take a copy. It is available electronically. It's a lot of paper if you want to take it on paper. It actually comes in a binder book. You could hurt somebody with it if you dropped it on them. So, maybe take it electronically if you can, but welcome to take it on paper. And please read and, again, ask us any questions. It is your tax money that we're spending. So, we'd love to hear from you as well as anybody else who may be listening, not just folks here in the room. So, thanks very much for coming in this evening, but you're welcome to stay.
Chip doesn't have a budget. All right, so Jessica, I just want to get Chip set up for this next session. So, Chip doesn't have his budget binder. Is it electronic?
The actual budget book?
Just the paper.
I found a document that looks like it's got, it says a total appropriation. It's in an email, and it looks like it has Historical Society, Farmers Market, DV Engineering Contract. Is that the list that everybody's looking at?
Yep.
I think so.
Okay. Thanks.
And Chris just sent you something on email too, Chip.
Yep, I got it.
Take a quick look at your email and you'll see.
I'm opening it up now. Okay, there we go.
And I forgot, since everybody's taking a break here, I forgot to also recognize Robin Doak. So, Robin has been with the Finance Department for the last four years, and she is retiring to spend time with her grandchildren.
You can't retire after only four years.
I know, I know. She has been a smiling face at the front counter and definitely has a can-do attitude. Jessica is fiercely trying to find somebody to fill the seat, but she will be really hard to replace. She's pretty amazing.
All right, we're just pausing for a moment until we get our budget discussion back on track with our finance director.
The other thing, just to let you know, is Earl's been sick, but he's online, so Public Works.
I think we got enough to start cutting these.
Yeah. I was reading in the letters, the request from Kennebec Behavioral Health is $60.
So, these are for you, these are for everybody.
Do you have a format that we're going to start with?
We're ready to take your lead. She didn't know if you wanted to go through it, if people had questions beyond what we asked. If you wanted us to go through the questions you receive from councillors. Because the ones we receive from councillors probably do want stuff. We really, as Jessica says, she knows her budget, so she can do whatever.
Yeah.
Which is kind of nice to have, I'm just saying.
I'm nowhere near to the degree, but so am I. I don't really have a lot of digestion on this either, so.
All right, so, thank you, Jessica. Thanks for everybody who wants to stick around and hear this fun stuff. I think we've gone through the operating budget a couple of times. So, maybe I thought for this evening's workshop, we could start with the specific questions that several of you have been forwarding on email to Jessica and to Sophie, and get to those points first and then see if we can unearth any other questions as opposed to going through another recitation of department by department. If there are any changes from Jessica, which I doubt there are, we could hear those as well. And there are several of the department heads available, including Public Works online. So, if we had specific questions about a department budget, we have major department heads available. So, let's start with questions. Matt?
That sounds great. Can we also, can you give us a rundown of the, you sent a nice sheet on the year-end reserve account balances? I'd love to go through the trust reserves and just understand what those are, what they go to, what the restrictions are for them. I don't know that we've ever done that, or maybe I just wasn't paying attention.
So... My understanding, other than this perpetual care for cemeteries, is that those are allocations that council makes, correct?
I'm not sure. I'm understanding what you mean by allocate. So, the trust funds that are there are the library trust funds. The school trust funds have all been transferred to the school. And then charity trust funds, so you're talking the Gould trust funds, which come before you to approve. And then the library, I believe most of the rest of them are related to the library.
Gotcha.
I do not have all the trust document information details in front of me, nor do I know them. I'm not even sure I have all the physical trust documents. So, there's, those are monitored by department heads as well that are responsible for, you know, expending funds out of those accounts. So, they follow the investment policy, much like your cemetery reserves and your capital reserve accounts do. Their percentages are a little bit different than the capital reserve, so I don't know if that's a high-level enough answer for you or exactly what you're looking for in talking about those.
I guess, just in looking at them, I'd like to know what they are. I'd like to tie it out, like that the hall trust goes to this. And some of the balances are large and some are fairly small. And I just want to know what the use is and the planning for it. To know, are these on the right path? Like, are there other allocations we should be pushing whoever the sort of steward is of this to utilize? I mean, it just seems like, it just doesn't make sense as presented to know the best use of those funds.
Yeah, so there are restrictions on the uses of those funds. I do work with Courtney or had worked with Courtney in the past in most of those examples as they relate to the library. And she's very well-versed on what expenditures out of those trusts can be used for. The, most of the trusts only allow for what's earned in interest for that year. And a lot of them are like 95% of the interest that's earned in that year to be utilized for programming or whatever their stipulations are with the remaining 5%, if that's their thing, to put back into principle to help generate the longevity of the trust. But yeah, a lot of them are not actively utilized on an annual basis. They might be every, they might have to wait until they get enough interest generated before they can significantly do something.
And Jessica, these are all managed by the Library Board of Trustees.
Most of the library ones are, correct. Yep. And that's why it's the Gould trust fund that comes before you. And that's the big one that comes before you.
Okay. So, even if it's, it's just clearing up which ones are the library and which ones are not, I'd just love to have more information than just the name.
Sure. There's two Loth or Dorothy, Dorothy Loth. One of them says like Loth Library, the other one's Dorothy Low, or Low, is it? I don't have that paperwork right in front of me to see it. But they're all library with the exception of Gould unemployment and that second Dorothy Low trust. And I think that one even still has a library connection. But there was a specific, she had two trusts that she gave the town to assist.
Okay.
But I can certainly do a little bit more research and get you a write-up of what you're looking for.
Thanks.
Of course.
Daryl?
I've got a couple of questions to do with public safety. So, I'll stop with my first one since I retired from there. So, Fire Department, one of the questions I had, Sophie, we just discussed it a little bit about the money we're spending in overtime.
Yep.
And I know that both Fire, Rescue, and Police have put in for additional position. So, my key is, I talked to both chiefs about it, you know. Is this an opportunity, even though there's an increase in our operating budget for those personnel, I think, and the chief can verify this if it's right or wrong, but I think we have challenging staffing at the Fire Department. And number one, if we did fund that position, it was your question of a firefighter, medic, would the reduction in overtime justify the position? Would it help increase our coverage, which probably the answer is yes? And will it help have more available to answer the calls that we're getting? So, I, that's kind of the question I would have, both for Fire, Rescue, and the PDE.
So, I'm going to take that. And if the department heads aren't happy with what I'm saying, they can displace Jessica if they so choose. So, I'm going to start with Fire. And I will say that I am still evaluating staffing for Fire. And it's really hard to evaluate it when we've been positioned short most of the year, massive transitions in deputy chief position, and somebody on injured reserve, out on injury. So, what we've done at this point is stabilize, advertise for the open positions. And I really think I'd like to take, we've budgeted for every, for four people to be on each of the four shifts through the whole year. Let Jessica make sure that they've got enough money to staff four people 24 hours a day on every shift. I do think we're, we've been struggling with a few things in the Fire Department. I think morale has been one of them, and I think that that's really... I think morale has been one of them, and I think that that's really changing. As I've talked to council, when we talked about my performance goals, I really believe we're going to be in a situation where I'm going to come back and ask for a firefighter, paramedic, probably next year. And we'll evaluate with the team at that point, whether two full-time people on each shift, or if we need to begin to think about bringing in three people. And I've had that conversation with council.
So, I guess this is a procedural, and I think your evaluation is warranted, and I thank you for doing that. One of my frustrations with our municipal budget, if we find there's a need that maybe should come up in November, December, we're locked into our budgeting for that particular fiscal year, and it's very difficult to come in and make an adjustment, whether it's warranted or not. So, with that said, is, I don't know if there's an opportunity, and I know in the past, sometimes positions were funded for six months, or whatever. I would like to have, and I would support, if the manager finds a need to come up mid-budget season, I hope, to address the public safety needs of the community, we could do that. And I'm not sure how that does, meeting the requirements of the laws and everything, but that's, that's my goal, because I, you know, my hat is off to you. I think we're heading in the right direction, but there are some serious shortfalls that need, you know, get addressed, so.
And I think we see the same thing in the police department. You know, when I learned that, you know, we upstaff during the summertime, which is a time when we want people to also be taking vacation, and we have something along the order of one-hundred-and-sixty-three detail events. So, yeah, that's a lot. I thought Orinow was busy.
I'm only in five of them.
Yeah. So, the way you're thinking, I think the answer would be, if you're going to allocate funds, I would put it in a contingency, that we would then sit down and talk about as a team, and council would authorize, not simply putting it into the budget. And Jessica's looking at me, that just makes more work. But, I think that that's important.
Thank you, I agree. I think that's a, that's a great idea.
So, I'm trying to follow along here. Are you suggesting that the dollar amount that's in the unfunded full-time position be put into contingency, or are you suggesting that we, yeah, let me just ask that question? Is that...
Well, I think if the council, at the end of our budget deliberation, says that maybe we do want those positions staffed, or not, we're kind of in a fact-finding position, yeah, that might be the recommendation. I think our expenditures are overtime are large, and there may be some opportunities to have savings on there, plus increase our public safety coverage in fire, rescue, and the police. I like the idea of the contingency, that gives us some breathing room, maybe to look and maybe implement something in November, or something mid-year, which sometimes we don't have the opportunity to do. So, if we could figure out how to do that, I think we would meet the need of the community and the departments, and, you know, get to a good solution to fill those needs.
My question's related. So, just to maybe simplify or clarify this, if we were to be sort of like fully staffed, or what we deemed as fully staffed, would we see a decrease in overall wage expenditures, or would we just see it even out over the correct funding lines?
So, I'm going to, I'll balance that by saying, I think if you were to put in positions, you would see an increase to the budget, but it would be offset to some degree by savings in the overtime. I don't think what's being spent in overtime would fully go away, because you do have, there are just things that go on that overtime occurs. So, I would say you would definitely have a budgetary increase. Would it be fifty percent of what's there? I feel like that might be a little low. I think you would still incur maybe seventy percent of the cost that's there in the budget. I don't think you would see a huge decrease to the overtime for that.
Chip, did you have a comment there? I thought I heard you say...
Well, I'm thinking, you know, we've tried, sorry, I'm in the dark here, but when we talk about overtime, yes, it's nice to get out of it, but sometimes, some of our employees count on being able to make, make more money in overtime. So, I think that's something we've got to keep an eye out for. The other thing I think we need to do is, you know, I guess we're always short funds. I think we need to make sure that the town, or that the base expenses and needs are taken care of, before we start doling out more money to other organizations. And I'm talking like, we have to pay for roads, so those need to be covered. We have to pay for health, you know, safety, so those need to be covered, and make sure that we've got that money covered, and then figure out what else we can give away. Because that's what we're talking about doing, right?
Yeah, and I think, I just want to add something as well. I think, you know, overtime will happen. That's just kind of the nature of the work. But to see it has been fairly consistently, or, I don't know, at least for this past fiscal year, it has certainly been more than budgeted, so I'm not sure how we can better anticipate how much overtime we'll be seeing.
And I think you need to, everybody needs to be mindful, too, that the overtime that you're seeing is, in part, driven by the fact that you have budgeted positions that have gone unfilled, you know, that we haven't been able to fill. So, it's, it is requiring staff, existing staff, to work that overtime, to cover those man-hours, which is why I tend to look at all those wage lines together, as I indicated in my memo, when talking about the budget as a whole, to address whether or not there's more money needed in one versus the other. It's always a hard balance, because you're dealing with people, right? And so, I don't know that the staffing level today is going to stay the same through the whole year. And when and if someone chooses to leave, and say, we are lucky enough to fill the position, I can't guarantee you what that position's going to come in at, from an experience level, compared to what it was budgeted at, or paid out at, the budget before. So, you have all kinds of variables that, you know, you try to hedge against, as you're building a budget, and ultimately, what you're left with is what actually happens at the end of the day. So, you know, I'm not, I'm not opposed to any ideas, I don't want, I hope I'm not coming across that way, I'm just trying to get some of the thoughts out of my head with, you know, as I hear discussions go on. But that's, what you're seeing is trying to find that balance of, you know, right now, we may have vacant positions that we're accommodating for. Does that mean we need to increase overtime, because we have two vacant positions? But then if we fill it, right, we may not need that overtime, or vice versa. We may be fully staffed, and all of a sudden, you know, three people leave, I, you know, we're now going to have a ton of overtime occurred by remaining staff, and that's, you know, you're going to see those lines.
Right. So, there's not as much certainty, that if we were to add the two positions, one in fire, one in police, that we would directly reduce the overtime, because we have unfilled positions now, so that could end up being that the new position is also unfilled.
Right. Or, like in the case of PD, if it's, depending on who comes in, if they have to go to the academy, you know, we've got a position in, but there's limitations on what shifts and work can be done and filled, before, you know, they go to the academy and things like that. So, yeah, it's hit or miss, you know, and I don't want to say, because the other part of it, too, is, right, you add staff, and your capacity builds, right? So, you add staff, and it's like, we can now do this piece, that council's been asking for, the public's been asking for, you know, whatever. And then all of a sudden, we're short-staffed again, because that workload has just exponentially increased, because of the inherent nature of another body being able to do something. So, that's why I say it's difficult to judge, you know, how that breakout should be, which is why I try to, when I do my analysis, I try to combine them together, because it's just, you know, I would, I do agree, that if there are additional services and expectations of staff to do more, more staff is going to be needed. But you're not going to see a decrease in overtime by adding staff, in my opinion. I just don't see that happening.
So, I'm going to just jump in and ask everybody to take two steps back from the numbers, just for a minute, and what's overtime, and what's regular time. What the overtime numbers are telling you is that people are having to work more hours than we had planned for those people to work. And that really causes fatigue, burnout, causes people to have less job satisfaction. In the fire industry, while it's not necessarily our problem, it's the way it works. People work for multiple departments, and we're filling a plug, we're plugging a hole for many places, all of us together. And I didn't add police or fire to the list, because when I talked about, when I talked with council, I talked about, we have some structural issues that make it really hard to run the town, just in general. You have a structural gap in your fire department, where you run four shifts, and you have a full-time captain for every one of those shifts, and you have three time, three firefighter paramedics, full-time, that's what your budget is. So, you're already creating this lack of stability in your fourth shift, just by the structure that we run, because that's a rotating person. But it's not even a rotating person on a schedule, it's whoever happens to be free that day. It also creates issues, because when we hire people full-time, we're hiring AEMTs and paramedics. So, we know we've got at least two medics on each, two medical-trained people on each shift. The other two that rotate in, that people on each shift are per diem and call, it could be anybody. And, I mean, trained firefighters, but depending on their varied degree. So, I see that there is a need, both in police and fire. I think our police department has gotten really good over the last decade, of doing an awesome job on less than a shoestring budget and shoestring staffing. But, I am concerned about just jumping in, because I'm not sure what we're going to need in these departments. And I'd like to see with our new leadership team, with Paul and the two new deputies, what we come up with, because we might try to come up with something completely different, and want that person to be something different.
We have had a history, I'll talk when I was on the other side there, of bare-bones budgets. The one thing I can say, probably for every department that operates in the town or free port, it is pretty much a bare-bones budget. And, that's good, on one hand, but then, at some point, you have to pay the piper.
Mm-hmm.
We're getting close to having to pay the piper. I like Counselor Lawrence's opinion earlier, when he says, we really need to look at what we need, are providing as a government, to protect our town and our citizens here, at all levels, and to be adequately funded. It's not our position as the council to come out and tell you how to make this work. That's, we've got a very adequate department heads and manager to make that happen. But it is our, in my opinion, position to say, you know, we need to address this. And we know we have staffing issues. I think that, in my own opinion, we should not, not be funding these, because we know we've got a problem. And unfortunately, we're not the only community experiencing this in the state of Maine. It's going across the whole state. So, I hope we can have a mechanism. I'm encouraged that we've got, you know, some new staff coming on the fire department. I think, you know, some new ideas will be coming forward. I just want to make sure we have our tools, our funding, and in place, and if we have to take a hit this year and a hit next year, because a year is a long time in between budgets. And it's very frustrating sometimes, where we can't adjust our programming to meet the needs of the community, because we're locked into this budget session. So, as we move forward, I want to keep that in mind, I'm going to hop on that, so, just so people know.
So, I will tell you, as long as there's the support for what we need to be able to start building, the support for department heads in the operation of the town, I would be all over. If I thought, the directions I got led me to believe that I should be trying to be very conservative in our budget. And I will just say that this is a budget that I have driven Jessica crazy, in the whopping five months I've been here, because I've gone into her office and said, okay, I need this, where can I get the money for that? And it's like, we didn't budget it. If we didn't budget it, we don't have it.
But, I mean, we, so, my first statement is that, before we add positions, we need to go through the assessment process, which you're doing, and I think that that is the right first step, for sure. I echo what Daryl's saying, we need some flexibility to adjust mid-cycle, but isn't that through salary savings, right? The one, the one thing I think would be helpful to see, is over the past, let's call it, like, current and prior to fiscal years, what are we seeing for salary savings by salary line, budget to actual? And then what's our non-salary expense for the same period? Because that'll, because we can utilize salary savings within the current fiscal year to make other hiring decisions, should we need to. So, that would be a way for us to, let's say, in January, make a determination on a new hire. So, we wouldn't have to say, well, we just have to suck it up for five months, till we can get to the end of the fiscal year. That's the mechanism to do that, and you're going to have salary savings, just in the normal course of operations. But I'm just curious what scale it is? And I do know that all our surpluses go back and they fund other things, so I want to be careful of that, but having some additional data, I think, gives us a little bit better decision-making here.
So, I do just want to expand upon that, because that's exactly what staff does currently, right? We evaluate where the budgets are at, in comparison to the actuals that have come in. I can think of at least two departments, off the top of my head, where we've had, you know, vacant positions, and there's been a need for something, some other position within that department, and because of those savings, I, you know, they're able to get a half-year person, that then becomes part of the next budget, for that need. So, I don't want people to think that that's not what we look at and evaluate as department heads and your staff, that, you know, those are most certainly things that we look at and try to encompass, and you end up seeing it within the next, you know, budget cycle. But, yeah, I can, I will tell you, the, my struggle is that, we used to have a net program, right? And, so, we used to have fire, rescue, and net. And net funded a lot for fire, rescue, right? And then it didn't, because we didn't have a hospital. And I know I've been a broken record with this for the nine years that I've been here, but we literally have been taking small annual steps to, and we just, I think, two years ago, finally stepped away from budgeting and recognizing a net program that we really were not running anymore. But, to benefit our taxpayers and not have a huge spike, we phased it out, right? So, for me to give any kind of analysis of the budget line... So for me to give any kind of analysis of the budget lines for fire, rescue, I would argue is a little difficult to get a good understanding of what the numbers are actually telling you, because you have three different components at one point, and I actually had conversations with Sophie in building this budget. I would love to get to a point where I just have a fire, rescue budget, and there's one org object page that you look at that has everything they need. But to do that, you're then looking at something completely different from the year prior. And it generates, and not that questions can't come up, but then I'm not showing you apples to apples and I'm, you know, and so, again, it's becoming a phased-in process, which, there's pros and cons to both, right? I just, and it's not that the numbers can't be provided to you and information can't be, you know, reviewed. It's, I just want to caution you that it's going to look different. And there may not be, if I just, if I just run it, it may not give you the solid support you're looking for to say that that's what needs to be done, because there's so many variables that feed into that because of where things fall systematically. I would have to work with the chief and deputies to get a better feel for those gaps that you're looking at, when it relates to fire, rescue.
No, I mean, that's a fair point. I appreciate you explaining that. But if we moved away from that model three years ago, could we look at the last two years or the last year? And I'm not necessarily even calling it out by individual sort of index or org, but holistically across the entire town's budget for salary. I just, what I want to avoid is us putting additional funding in a contingency line that increases the tax burden on folks when we don't have a clear plan of how or when we're going to implement it. And I want to just see if there's a way for us to make midstream decisions without having to do that.
Yep.
So, and I know it's not going to be perfect, but...
Yeah, and we can certainly look at that. You know, the other factor in your wage lines is, just as Sophie indicated, that, you know, when there's people out on injury or medical, that changes your numbers drastically. Because depending on what their situation is, depends on what they're currently receiving and what we're paying to cover when they're not there. And that has happened over the last couple of years. So it's hard to, hard to get just a baseline of what would be if this was a full staff versus not. But it's an accurate shot of what we've been faced with. So you definitely will get that. And just, the comparable to what you're, what you're looking for as far as, you know, a full staffing level versus when we're short-staffed and what those savings are, I don't know that it's a true picture of what the savings are, because the reality is the savings would be greater if there wasn't that overtime occurred because of something else. You know what I mean? But we can break it down and see, I can, I can start that analysis and we can start to have conversations and tweak, you know, what you may be looking for.
Sure. Would you, another component of that, you make a good point. Would we be able to know, would it be an impossible task to know what the anticipated head count, like the full FTE was for fiscal period? So then you could say, "This is what we had budgeted for, you know, call it 95 FTE, and then this is where we ended up the year." So that tells that piece of the, of the story?
Yes. And I was trying to look really quickly to see, because I think in the, I don't know, oh, see, I do pull that together. It's not in your budget memo, but in my GFOA budget doc, I do put that information. So yes, I have FTE counts, and you can see that five-year trend. So I can provide that for the next meeting. Absolutely.
Yeah. Are we just doing the operating budget tonight?
Yep.
Okay, good. Because I have a capital thing down the road.
Jessica, I just want to, you know, reinforce that these are questions coming because we're trying to deliberate on where we're going to end up with the tax budget. It's not a question of, "We're not getting the right information from you." We're getting excellent information from you.
I don't take that at all.
We're just interpreting it from...
Happy to provide whatever.
...other ways that we want to try and reflect the public's wishes here about how we spend their tax money. So thank you for that. Eric?
Say, I think what I'm hearing from all of that is that there can be conversations between Jessica and Sophie, coming back to the next meeting, about where do we think we could have money available to make adjustments as needed, so that we're not stuck waiting five months or something? But also, to Matt's point, not putting a huge amount in a contingency that we are just going to sit on until next year.
Yeah, we can adjust the tax rate in December or February.
Right.
We set the tax rate and that's it.
Yeah.
So that's all the money we collect. So the only way to get additional funds that we didn't budget is to go raise money or find a grant somewhere. And I think that there, I think there is enough experience from the staff to understand that minor fluctuations can be managed within those lines. So, anyway, Chip, you were going to say something?
Yeah, I was going to say, the other thing is cut some of the other things that we give money to. I mean, that don't support, that support the town in ancillary function. And I don't like doing that, but that is the way we need to do it. Because if we don't get the staffing right, we end up burning out people and people leave. And we don't want to do that. Staffing is important, and especially fire, rescue, because you never know what's going to happen. You have a fire that they could put out in two minutes, you have a fire that runs for two days. You know, that changes the whole program. But if we don't have the correct base employee count, we're just going to burn people out. And that makes it more expensive for us, because then we lose the experience. So if we can concentrate on this and figure out what we need and then start doling out the extra, that, I mean, that's really what I'm trying to get to. Let's figure out what we actually need for a town to be fully funded, to be fully employed, to be fully covered, what our expenses are, and then go out and do whatever else we can do.
Right. I'll just point out that we heard earlier from the manager that the two positions that were potentially going to be added to fire, rescue, and police were intentionally not added to this budget, because the manager is in discussions, continuing discussions with those department heads about how to structure the department. So if we want to, if we want to...
Right.
...adjust that, then we should make that clear to the manager.
Right. But is that, is that because we're trying to find money so we can give it to somebody else? Or is it because, you know, is it because we don't really need those? I think for people on a shift, that seems kind of light to me, because if someone goes on vacation, then you've got three people on a shift and you're trying to drag someone in for that fourth shift. So I don't think, that's me just thinking, being, having been a watch officer and writing a lot of freaking watches.
Yeah.
That the employee count doesn't sound right to me, right off the bat.
The budget presentation was presented to us without any consideration of the community organizations that we heard from this evening. So the staffing...
No change from last year.
Right. The staffing and the head count and the department staffing patterns were included in that budget prior to any inclusion of the community, community organization requests that we heard this evening.
So...
Yeah, one, yeah, but the last couple of years, we've been saying, "Hey, keep it where we can, keep it low, keep it..." You know, so it's like, "Well, I don't really need this person, or I don't need..." You know what I'm saying? It becomes a different question. It's like, "This would be great to have, because this will make everything run smoother." Versus, "Well, I need you to cut 10%, or I need you to cut whatever." Which is where we've been the last couple of years. I think we've been trying to keep, keep it low, which is where we should be, but we need to, it's now time, like Daryl said, time to pay the piper. I think we're there. Or we're going to be deeper next year and we're going to have to pay him then.
Chip, I agree with you, but I think that's the exercise the manager's going through at the moment, is doing that assessment so we can make those good decisions and it can be based in reason and fact. And then we'll staff appropriately, because I'm right with you. We want our town staff to be appropriately, we want an appropriate level of staffing to achieve what the town needs in terms of services. And that's a commitment that I think we're all on board with. But I just don't have a handle, I couldn't tell you if three is the right number, or five, or two, but that's what Sophie's going to get us.
Well, and I think the other piece we want to keep in mind is, while I would be a fool to sit here and say, "No, don't." I mean, do we need more public safety people? Yes, we do. I'm not exactly sure what that looks like, but I would hope we would bring those people on with a longer-term plan. The other thing is incrementally, what we decided in this budget was it was more important to, this includes some money for additional wages for the people that are there right now. And it includes taking steps to adequately make sure that they have the equipment they need, the creature comforts that they need when they're sleeping somewhere overnight to, you know, we really looked at, in general, should we shore up the core first and then figure out what the next step should be? And for me, we're still in negotiation. We, Jessica and I put a number in here, but we haven't finalized the contract. And I, well, I so appreciate having a town council that sees the value in not burning our people out and wanting to adequately fund. I think that, just like we talked about long-term implications for senior management positions and restructuring, I think we need to get the data, understand the calls, understand what the departments really need, and then make a plan that would be incremental, because as a taxpayer, I would rather see a little bit at a time over time.
Daryl?
So I'm going to go back, we're talking budgets, I'm going to throw something out there, see where it lands. So I'd like to see us reduce the funding for Freeport Scholarship Foundation from $20,000 to zero.
Currently, there is nothing in the budget for the Freeport Scholarship Foundation. That's a consideration item for you. You would have to actively add it in. You have no, no need to physically take it out.
Okay, so...
So that this one...
And is that the same?
This one sheet.
Yep.
None of this is in the budget.
Okay.
So you have no need to actively take any of that out. It would just be actively putting it in if it was so chosen.
Thank you, Jessica.
Much like the decision a few minutes ago, or discussion a few minutes ago about the farmer's market. That would have to be actively added in.
But just...
Can you tell me where that sheet is in the budget? Or what...
It's the very last, it's the very last page of the operating budget section.
Just to, for clarity for everyone, the version we have also doesn't have anything for the property tax relief program in there. So that's another consideration, because we adopted it, we didn't fund it yet. So that total of $275 is a bit misleading. So just wanted to make sure everyone had that on their radar.
Chip, if you have the electronic PDF, it's page 67, if you have the big long...
Okay, I'm trying to find, when you just, I just downloaded all the document, I looked for page 67 in the, all right. Where did I have them all here?
Yes, Eric? Just to follow up on the, on the public safety salary conversation, one of the things I wanted to bring up about why I think this holistic look is also important, is that it's not just about the salaries and hiring the right number of people. It really is about maintaining the staff that we have and making sure that they have the equipment and the facilities that they need, which is what the manager was just talking about. Chief Goodman and I spent a good, long time at both the Yarmouth Public Safety Building and our Public Safety Building last week. And one of the things that it was very clear in talking with both of those, both police and fire departments in Yarmouth, and police and fire departments in Freeport, is that the mutual challenge is about maintaining even the staffing levels, regardless of whether they're funded, and having people stay within, within the department. So I'm hearing lots of good questions around how do you reduce overtime, not just from the budget standpoint, but with what Sophie was saying in terms of that only leads to fatigue, which leads to potential injury and outages, which is a vicious cycle, you know, in all kinds of staffing issues. But I think we want to make sure that we're not just putting money in the salary budget to be able to hire the right people, but we need to make sure that we're maintaining the people that we have, which is, which is an ongoing struggle. And making sure that all of the rest of that public safety budget is filled out appropriately too. And so I'm confident that the manager is going to continue to work with the department heads to get that balance right.
Dan?
Can I ask some questions that don't revolve around public safety staffing?
Sure.
The, and I think they're mostly quick ones. One is just about telephone charges. There are a lot of different discussions around that. And two of the things that I still don't understand are, at Winslow Park, there's a permanent budget change based on service requirements from the phone company for $20,000 in new phone costs. And then the other sort of related question had to do with another increase in telephone costs that was due to the addition of an iPad in the units that need a cellular connection. So can you speak to those two?
Yeah, so I don't know how detailed I can get with the Winslow Park phone, other than to tell you, working with our old phone service provider, whatever upgrades needed to happen couldn't happen with where things, how things were established at the time. Especially, I guess, being, I don't know if I want to say how remote they are, but, you know, where they are located, too. And so we had to go with another phone company, provider, and, one, their costs were incrementally higher for all-around, but it was, it was almost, if I, I would have to refresh myself with Tom.
Neil is online.
Neil is? Yeah, he might have a little bit more information that he's able to give with it. Other than I just, I know there were things needed that were not in existence that we're now being charged for, because it's part of that baseline service essentially at this point.
Yeah, $20,000 every year seems like an unusual amount when we might explore alternatives. Is there enough cellphone coverage to just get a bunch of cellphones or...
I know Tom did some, Tom did quite a bit of research when it came to the phone service being utilized at Winslow Park.
Okay. You have to follow up with Tom, if that's easier.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's hear from Neil. Go ahead, Neil.
Hey, can you hear me?
Yep.
I've never gotten a phone bill for the park, so I really don't have any idea how that works. I have talked to Tom and he said that he was trying to take care of it, but I, I've never seen a bill for our phones. They were always in a bunch, from what I understood, through the town. So I'm sorry, I can't give a lot of info on that. I'm very concerned about that as well.
I can give you a little bit of detail. So we had a current phone provider that really jacked our bill up, and we're in the process of moving to a new provider. And hopefully, we'll be able to bring that number down once we've, once we've moved all the phones. They've got three different phones there, and they're at the end of the road. And so we're in the process of trying to move to a new provider, and hopefully it'll be, be less than $20,000 a year, we hope.
Is there cell coverage if...
It's not cell coverage, it's landline coverage, but with a different provider.
But if the landline's too expensive?
Yeah, no, that's a possibility. Yeah, definitely.
And then do you know about the other one with the iPads and...
That's public taken?
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, so there are iPads that were purchased to go into the units. And part of their ability to connect with the software that's utilized when on-scene and reporting needed a cellular connection in order to be able to do so and to function. So that increased their costs.
Okay, that makes sense. If I can still go while I'm on a roll. The ARPA funding, there was, we had two grant programs, one for $60,000, one for $40,000. I thought they're both funded out of ARPA, and I see that the $60,000 one is mostly spent, and I assume that lasts... and I see that the $60,000 one is mostly spent, and I assume that less, or is somewhat spent. But the $40,000 hasn't been touched. So are those the two buckets of money for the Momentum Grant and the Fit Up Grant?
That is my understanding, that the one labeled "Grant Matches" for $60,000 was the Fit Up Grant Program, and the one labeled "DV Project Matches" was the Momentum Grant.
Okay.
And I do believe the majority of all, both of those programs have been at least allocated. They haven't been expended yet because the projects need to become complete to some extent. Yep.
Well, we expect that those will be spent.
We, I fully expect those to be spent.
Okay.
Speaking for the Fit Up Grants, we are, that's very close to being fully spent, so.
That's what I found. Okay. And then, general administration, communications position?
It's in there.
Is that in there?
It's in there full-time.
Are we hiring somebody?
Yeah, I hope so.
Are we posting the job?
I hope so.
When are we posting the job?
Before the next meeting.
Okay. And, go ahead, Joanna.
I just want to go back to the Fit Up Grants, and, you know, I know we are not making decisions right now because we are looking to see where everything lands, but I think I would love to put that onto the eventual conversation of what that might look like moving forward. I think we could argue that that was a beneficial program.
Yeah, it'd be a great discussion.
I just want to say, when I was talking about people and FTEs, I wasn't talking just about fire rescue. It needs to be town-wide. That's my only comment, so.
Okay. Other questions? Jessica's still standing, we haven't knocked her over yet. Very good. All right, so I don't have to remind you to bring your questions forward. You all seem plenty capable of doing that, and that's how we get to good budget decisioning when everybody's really up to speed on it. So I encourage that to continue. We will turn the music off and set the numbers down, so Jessica has a chance to put it into final format. But even at the evening of our adoption, we could still make changes. Not recommended, not suggesting that, but it is technically possible. So let's try and get that information forward. And if there is, you know, there's a lot of, there's a lot of moving parts here, so if there is a, an inclination to have an informal budget workshop where we're not sitting up here, we could have that conversation. We just have to schedule it and post it. We could have it here, we could have it off-site. Three hours early would have been beautiful to have outside, so just suggesting. So if we want to have another conversation about where that is, in terms of all these various line items, particularly around public safety staffing or other particular items that folks are interested in, I'm happy to schedule that and arrange that. It's a big, you know, big decision that we make here about the public's money, so.
From a process standpoint, you do have another workshop on your next meeting in May. I think it's, I dropped, 21st, I was like, it's 21st or 22nd.
Yep.
And then you have a public hearing, which will then be followed by another council workshop on June 4th, and then tentative adoption on June 20th.
Daryl?
Not operating questions for Sophie. I was talking to Councilor Smith earlier. We're in the season now where sidewalk maintenance and all that stuff's being done. So my question is, we have asked the Complete Streets to go up with the idea of replacing some of the brick sidewalks with hot top. Are we slowing down progress of work that could be done by using that process? Question number one. And if so, is there something we could do? Because what I don't want to do, I know how quickly it takes to get crews lined up within, what do we have, like four and a half months that really the work can be done? So are we putting the cog in the wheel here, or not, is my question?
So I'm gonna plead, ignorance sounds really bad, because I'm supposed to be smart, but I wasn't aware that Complete Streets made those type of decisions. We had gotten, we became aware that brick sidewalks on inclines and in some other areas are not safe. So Earl and I made the decision that we were gonna pull them out in this, in the unsafe areas and replace it with asphalt with granite curb. I'm sorry if I've directed my staff to end around a process, but that seemed to me to be an important distinction to make.
Which brings up my other point. Complete Streets do a great job, and sometimes I think we put a lot on committees that we should be dealing with here at the council level. And there's an example where, you know, if I was king, you know, we'd keep the brick sidewalks on Main Street, and the outlying areas that need to have attention right off quick, we can move forward with that and maybe get the work done. So I think there's a balance there, and not to belittle the work Complete Streets has done, but I'm wondering if we put a lot more on them that was needed to be put on them, and a lot of that may should come back. And that's for discussion another day. But I don't want to lose the opportunity of scheduling work to be done, because we have a process that takes us out of that critical time period when the work can get done.
So Counselor Benoit, I think, has a question. But for those safety things, I have kind of taken that as our responsibility.
And can I just add, Sophie, on that same topic, I know that Earl has been responding to some of the safety concerns about those inclines and has actually moved some work forward into this season that wasn't otherwise scheduled. And Complete Streets is gonna talk about that on Tuesday, the week from today.
My question's completely off-topic, so I just want to make sure we're all set with that conversation before I change topic.
Go right ahead, Joanna.
Great. Out of sort of curiosity and a revenue question, business taxes, is there, how does that work into our revenue, looking at sort of that breakdown of our budget? Is that through revenue sharing, or is there some that's within the town?
So can you, can you reframe your question?
If we're, you know, I don't know much about how we tax businesses or what that looks like in town.
So businesses get taxed the regular tax rate for their real estate, and then they're also going to have to declare personal property.
Okay.
Personal property has kind of three different buckets, and if you need more, we'll have to bring Min in, because I know enough to be dangerous. But there is personal property that people just have to pay the same tax rate on as we pay for real estate. There's personal property that falls into a bucket that reimbursed a portion of what they pay for taxes. And then there's personal property that is fully exempt, that the tax, that the town gets reimbursed about 60% of what would otherwise be owed. That, you see that line as Betty. If you need more of that breakdown, Joanna, you would love to have a discussion with Min, because he knows a lot.
Sounds good. I'm just, yeah, is that, so that go, is that through the town or through the state?
So Min's job is to collect all the personal property, properly depreciate it, and then work with taxpayers on the reimbursement program. And on the exemption program, he has to file documents with the state. So the state is reimbursing those two programs. One reimbursement goes to the taxpayer, and then in the exempt, it comes to us.
So B E T E is Business Equipment Tax Exempt, and B E T R is Business Equipment Tax Reimbursement. That's what those acronyms stand for.
Awesome. Thank you.
That was a great question.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions? We can accept a motion here?
I guess my, my question is just back to, back to this sheet in terms of giving the staff information to bring back to us. If we are, if we have a sense now of certain things that we want to add back into the budget, or add into the budget, would it be helpful to discuss that at this point? Or given where we are with next meeting schedules, I'm just wondering, having heard from the various representatives of these groups tonight, before we wait two weeks to make recommendations about what we want to do with that, whether it would be helpful to do that now or not, given the time?
If it would help, I can give you a brief overview of what is already in the budget versus what you may need to consider.
Well, I think we, I mean, we have that. I mean, we have that on the, on the, on the social services page. There is what is already in the budget versus what is, what is not. And I guess, from, from my perspective, particularly some of the very small amounts that are simply increased costs, and recognizing that other organizations have increased costs, just like we all have increased costs everywhere else in budget, that, you know, increasing the funding for Oasis Free Clinic, Snowmobile Club, you know, some of those things, the farmer's market, which we have been funding, but we were funding from a different source, those things, I feel like it would be helpful to just work those in if there's already consensus, that there's, we want to bring those up to a more current funding level.
So if you look at that sheet, if you take off the first four, that's like 85% of the impact. And so if you leave the rest of it, and I'm not necessarily advocating for that, I'm just saying, you know, the mil rate impact becomes like one and a half cents.
Yeah.
With those on there. And then we have to add in what we're gonna do about the property tax relief program. But I'm just saying that, you know, if we move the first four off, that basically reduces that 275 by 85%.
Right.
So.
And I understand that we're, you know, we're still having these conversations on those police-fire-rescue conversations. Are we gonna be looking at some sort of contingency? I, I hear, I know I heard you, Matt, say you wanted to sort of look at what the breakdown was between the ones that are sort of folded, pulled together like Kennebec Northern Light and Lifelight. I guess what I would be interested in doing is focusing specifically on the ones that did submit through Jessica the process, and we're looking at basically either funding, new in the budget because their previous funding came from someplace else, or some pretty modest increases to what the operating budget would be.
Yeah. I mean, in, to save us time dancing around this, I'll just throw out what I'm thinking. I think the increase for Oasis Free Clinic, there's community value there, in my opinion. I think the Snowmobile Club increase is reasonable. I think the Meeting House art support, they do a great job for our community. There's a great impact there. Southern Maine Agency on Aging, I think, is reasonable. The farmer's market, I'm behind. I think the Kennebec Behavioral Health is $60. Northern Light Health is $1,000. I'm supportive of those, those programs support our community members and deliver a valuable service. I'm on the fence about Lifelight. And the Freeport High School Scholarship Foundation, I believe it's a really worthy cause. The RSU did just get a significant amount of money for scholarshiping, and I'd like to see how that plays out before we commit tax money to that.
I also like to add that there, I had mentioned sort of the Fit Up and the Momentum Grants that were ARPA-funded, and also Electrify Freeport that was ARPA-funded. And I just know that there has been interest in the community on those programs. So I don't know where those are in the budget, or if we kind of want to add that to the queue of things to consider.
Yeah, I guess from a process standpoint, we, we've opened the can here, so we're going to look at these. But we, we have, in my opinion, I think we have a little bit more gravity on finalizing our departmental budgets and where we are with staffing. To Councilor Lawrence's point, you know, let's get things squared away with our town, primary town operations. At some point, and I've watched this a number of times, we collectively go through wanting to do this, and wanting to do that, and wanting to, and we get the number, and Jessica shows us the number, and we all blow our hair off, like, what? We can't have a tax increase like that. And then we go back, and so we churn over it again and again. So I think that a suggestion is that we, is that we have a consideration of the, what is Jessica's using as outside agencies' budget requests, which could very well include the items that Joanna just added on there. And that maybe we allocate a specific half-hour at a future meeting and just go through those and have an up or down vote on each one, and we read them and say yes or no, and we take, because we could talk about what each of us like, and what each of us think is worthwhile, and what each of us think is really serving. And that could take hours, and, and it's moving not even a penny on the rate, but we feel important about it. So a suggestion is that we put that off to the side for a moment, and focus our questions and deliberations and any particular items to be giving back instruction through Sophie to Jessica for our next meeting, that we do that between now and our next meeting through email or other, other means. And that we'll take a half an hour at that budget workshop on the 21st and go through this list, and be prepared that we're gonna take an up or down vote on each line. And if we get a majority of votes, then, then we add it in, and we can keep a running tally, so that we're, we're dealing with a dollar amount that is within a manageable amount and doesn't disrupt all of the other calculations that Jessica's doing.
I would just like to add for your deliberation, and your, to give you time to think about it, is that, you know, the outside agency support initially started and was funded for organizations that provide services that the town would have to provide.
Right.
If these organizations did not.
Did not.
It was not for things the town would just like to see. And I'm not saying one way or the other, right, wrong, or indifferent of what you want in here. I'm just saying, to give you some perspective.
That's the historical perspective.
Because, you know, four years ago, this budget line item was 30, this budget group was $35,000. It has grown to over $50,000, and you have a request that totals about over $90,000. So as you start to consider and accept and, and, you know, ask for these things, you're gonna continue to see this grow. So I don't know what the right answer is. I think it's dependent on what council wants to see. Again, I'm not trying to tell you right, wrong, or indifferent of what you want to see for this. I'm just trying to give you some historical perspective that Freeport's intent on, that's why they were initially human service agencies, right? That's what it used to be called, because it was stuff that would have to be covered by the town if these agencies did not exist. And it was menial in that it was 30, around $35,000. And, you know, in three years, we've seen it jump to $90,000. And it's not necessarily all for services that the town has to provide. It's all I'm trying to give you feedback to, as you deliberate.
Say each words from our finance director.
I'm nothing but, if not consistent, right?
I do have a question for Jessica. Can you notify us or put a list of what those services are that we need to provide? Not now, not tonight, but what, what they were in the beginning, at least?
Yes, I can, I can do that.
Jessica, before you do that, would you, could we talk?
Of course.
All right, so we have some homework for our next budget. All right, so we have some homework for our next budget discussion on the 21st. We have a couple of public hearings that we just scheduled, so juicy agenda. We adjourn. Moved in second to adjourn. Counsel Pilsbury?
Aye.
Counsel Fornier?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Counsel Piltch?
Yes.
The chair votes yes. Counsel Lawrence?
Yes.
Counsel Benoit?
Aye.
Seven to zero to adjourn. Meeting is adjourned.
See ya.